We're live.
We're live, we're on.
Okay.
Yeah, we can start without Nan, I guess we got a couple of easy things. Wednesday, May 22nd, Planning Board meeting. First thing on our agenda is a bond release for Alyssa Way. Email who requests the release of a bond. Christine, are you all set with this?
Yes.
You are, okay. Anybody get any comments?
Yeah, I'll move that we move, release the bond.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that one's done. Twenty-three, Seventh Lane, and A and R. Is Brian Malisi here yet? Not seeing him.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that was withdrawn.
Is there any paperwork?
We got paperwork right there.
Yeah, let me pull it.
Which one?
Where is that?
Oh, here's, here's, here's. Let me see what we got.
Is there a letter of withdrawal or an email?
I don't have anything, not on the record. This is... Okay. Although, wait a minute, I'm looking at the other one.
That's Regina. That's Regina. I haven't seen it.
All right, don't worry about it, but...
If you, if you're, if it has been...
Yeah, I think it was...
It was pulled? Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Paul Haverty, Town Council. I did have conversation with the attorney for the applicant about this matter today, and he did instruct me that they would be withdrawing this application.
Okay.
He said he would be contacting Colleen about that. I presume that he did.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, so we can just, just do nothing with it, I guess, right? All right, well, that was a quick one. All right, how about number, new public hearing, number six, Regina. Sean and Teresa Flathive are seeking a permit under 195-11 accessory structures to construct, construct a 30 by 36 garage addition that is over 900 square feet on a non-conforming lot and will not meet zoning setbacks and any other relief deemed necessary. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I got a pile here. This is, let's see, from Colleen to engineering, planning, okay. Attached. Okay, no comments on this. This is a memorandum from Colleen. No comments on that one. Public Works. Okay, Republic PB filing, Regina Drive New Garage Edition. Dear members, this office has reviewed the certified plot plan by John Abagast and Associates, professional land surveyors, dated April 6, 2017, revised through April 15, 2019. As a result of this review, the office has the following comments. Consideration should be made to installing roof drain drywells. Erosion control in the storm drains on Regina Drive and silt fence along the back of the property is required prior to any earth disturbing activities. A road opening permit may be required for work within the right-of-way. Contact DPW Highway Division for all necessary permits. Regina Drive was recently paved and no cuts into the pavement will be allowed until the end of 2023. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos. Oh yeah, this is just more, another memorandum from Colleen.
Do we get a plot plan?
Uh, I'm gonna presume we have something in here. That's all that's readable.
Do we have a plan up, we could throw up?
No, it's not part of the attachment. I just brought that up. It was just a legal ad.
It was.
Okay. There should be plans in the file.
Yes, there are. I believe I have enough for everybody. Two of them go that way. Wait a minute.
This is not...
What is that?
What is this?
I'm not entirely sure what this is.
Just a GIS thing or something.
Yeah. You want to pass those back to me? I think there's some confusion in the record here. I have three copies of this, whatever it is.
Related to the abutters list.
Yeah, okay, related to the abutters list. That must be what that's all about. Okay. Now, I don't have any plot plans here.
Christina is sending one, one copy of it around. Do you have any extras?
I can, I can email it quickly.
We can bring it up on the, on the computers.
They're planning where they're planning to put it.
Ah, here we go. I've got an application. I've got the plans on the application, one copy.
We'll pass it around real quick.
I got another copy of it here.
Okay. We'll take a look over here then.
Where'd you find a copy?
Christine had one.
So, why don't we have...
So, it's detached.
Oh.
This is kinda like...
Is the garage detached?
And they wonder why.
It is detached, 10 feet off the house. The driveway, there's another lot here. The driveway's not gonna be going to the street, it's just gonna be tied into the existing driveway.
Yep.
It's gonna be on that lot 4192 or 29?
It's 4129.
4129, yeah.
Was this an additional garage, or are you converting the existing garage to something else?
So, the existing garage is, is staying, that's attached to the house. This is gonna be a separate structure. It's detached from it.
Opposed garage, right there.
Okay.
There you go.
Left inside of the paper.
It don't look like it's...
It says it's 10 foot, 1 inch.
Looks like there's plenty of open space still, the green space. They're not overdeveloping the lot.
Basically, gonna have to curve the driveway over here. But what's happening is garage space.
On my computer.
So, what's happening to the existing garage?
The existing garage is gonna be used for their, their personal vehicles. Detached is for snowmobiles, four-wheelers that they have, that they're storing.
All right.
Take a look at that?
Oh yeah, sorry.
We only got two copies here. Don, you got any questions on this, or you haven't looked at the plan yet neither?
This is Regina.
I don't see anything particularly scary about it.
The doors are gonna be facing Regina or also...
Sixing Regina, yes.
How tall is the building?
Overall, it was, I believe, right under 20 feet. I think it was like 19'4".
There's not a second floor on it?
There's storage up there. The back's gonna have a shed dormer on the back half of it. The front's gonna be roofline starting at 10 feet.
Wasn't there some problems we've had with second-floor storage buildings, Evan, in the past with a couple of different plans or something?
I think the board is normally attached to boilerplate condition, no commercial uses, unless it's associated with a home occupation. I'm not hearing that this is gonna be used for a home occupation.
Are you counting the second floor as square footage space?
Um, no, this is just gonna be a storage.
It's like a mezzanine, it's not like a...
So, the front half is, I mean, you're really, no storage, because it's, the roof line's dying down right to the floor level, so the whole front half of that structure is...
I think that's where we ran into trouble before, was the building inspector was worried about cars, space, built the space up above, I thought, another...
Yeah, you are correct, on a couple of them, I think we've run into that.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing here is that it's not a floor-to-ceiling height.
The back half will have a roughly 15 by 30 area that will be a floor-to-ceiling height on the back half, because we'll do a shed dormer on the back half of that.
So, is that, what's, is that included in your total gross square footage over 900?
Uh, yes. Yeah, because 30 by 36 is gonna be 1,080 for the first floor, and then your 540 on that, that other full heights area.
I'm just trying to make sure, because we've had problems with it in the past, I'm trying not to...
Yep, yep. I got, here, I can, I mean, I had everything submitted to Colleen, I can...
No, we're just, we ran into this problem one of the time, I'm just trying to make sure that we got our...
So, I'll just put in the decision, no commercial uses.
Yeah.
Did, did the board ask what the 540 second-floor mezzanine is to be used for? Was it just storage?
It's just storage.
Yeah. Should we write it can't be used?
It's not gonna be finished.
Nope.
Okay.
Not at this time. Not that I have any plan on doing it, yeah.
You're gonna do plumbing update and everything, so you could have an apartment?
Nope, no plumbing in there.
Kinda cutting, Ray, wanna...
Yeah.
Put together a...
Let me dream up one.
Yeah.
Well, this is a public hearing, so you're gonna have to open it up.
Okay. Forgot about that, sorry. Do we get anybody from the public that would like to speak on this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is John Polycrones, P-O-L-Y-C-H-R-O-N-E-S. I live at 4 Regina Drive, which would be in between where this new garage is. Sean and Terry have been in the town now for almost 10 years. I've been in for 33. They've been good custodians of their property. They've done a lot of upgrading, and I think this would be a good thing for them to have. And I don't perceive it to be a problem, and hopefully the board will not either.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No worries, Mike. Wait a minute. Anybody else? Nope, not hearing anybody.
Then I would move the close to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, nobody has anything else. I would move that we grant special permit under 195-11 accessory structure to construct a 30 by 36-foot garage addition with the conditions that we've discussed and that Evan will put in the decision.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Prove.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the way you run these.
New business. All right, we're gonna have our discussion on the cluster subdivisions that we were talking about at the last meeting. Anybody wanna start in on that, or I can throw my two cents in on it, I guess. What we got now is, for clustered zoning, it's a 10-acre, 10-acre minimum in order to qualify for cluster zoning. The thought was it, was on it to bring that 10 acres down some, because there's really not any big pieces of land left in town anymore to, to wide open.
How does that mean? Like, is that a question just for the 10 acres? How many houses can they put? Do they put them all to one acre? Is that what you're saying? How they clustering them together?
They'll leave one section of it as open space.
Yep.
And then they'll put, like a little, like a stone gate development.
Like a stone gate in one area.
So, lot areas were reduced down to 12,000, no less than 12,000 square feet, but there's no density bonus given. So, on a 10-acre lot under traditional development, if you could get 10 lots, under cluster, you can still only get 10 lots.
Right.
But the lot area can be reduced down to 12,000 square feet in exchange for at least 25% of the total acreage being deed restricted as open space.
Now, that, of course, has, has the advantage, you can take lots with a lot of wetland on them.
Yes, we define the quality of the open space.
Right.
We limit the amount of wetland. The incentive for the developer is less infrastructure cost, less roadway, less water, sewer, electric.
And, and the chance that he can get 10 lots on something that frankly, you couldn't get 10 on.
No, 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 no.
How many can they get? You're saying down to 12?
Same as underlying zoning. There's no, there's no density bonuses.
Really?
It just, the individual lots are smaller, but there's a portion of it that compensates for that reduction that has to be set aside as common open space.
How does, how does that work out with, with wetlands and other spaces similarly protected, though?
So, a 40,000-square-foot lot requires 80% contiguous upland.
So, the whole...
Cluster does as well.
Okay, so if, say, say they cut off a quarter of it, 80% of that quarter that they cut off would have to be non-wetland?
With the open space.
With the open space.
The open space, I believe it's, I believe what we require is that it, is that it can be no higher than, than the average wetland on the entire parcel. So, bylaws written so that the open space is not junk.
Okay. So, in some oddball cases, somebody might get one more lot out of it, but it's not, it's not gonna make a huge difference.
It's like Kennecy's land, they had to pick and choose here and there. They had the land.
Yeah.
It was hard lots, lots for them to develop, but nothing's happened to that either.
Right, but there's absolutely no, no density bonus. You don't get more lots because you go cluster.
So, if you had 10 acres, you're saying they can only build 10 cluster homes?
Um, if you had 10 acres, you're probably gonna get seven to eight homes, because you need...
And they can be just closer together, within a 12,000-square-foot lot?
Correct.
So that...
So, they're clustered, they're clustered.
But the rest of the property cannot be built upon.
Correct, deed restricted.
Right.
And the question is, do we reduce that down to 7 acres?
Five acres.
Whatever, you know, you pick the number.
Yeah, then you would be, then the underlying zoning would reduce as well with that. So, if it's seven acres, you're only gonna get seven homes?
Or, or six, because you gotta take out the roads.
Six, right.
You take out the road.
Right. So, again, so the, so the cluster requires a special permit, which means that unlike definitive subdivision, which is designed to comply and the board approves, special permit under the cluster, the neighborhood and the board has a bit more massaging and customization of the project. So, it has the opportunity to fit into the neighborhood better. An example is, very often, established neighborhoods wanna see mature forest preserved to serve as a buffer, or wildlife corridors, or things of that nature. Cluster allows that opportunity to exist, rather than a traditional subdivision where they normally will clear-cut the entire parcel. So, it's worked well in Chelmsford.
Yeah, it has.
We haven't had many, but the ones, the ones that the board has approved, I think, have been very well-received in the community. The residents seem to enjoy that type of aesthetic.
Where do they have them in town? I just don't know offhand.
Um, the most recent one is McKenney Farm, Alyssa Way, the one we just released the bond for.
Okay.
So, that happened to be farmland, and the neighborhood and community wanted to preserve farmland and agricultural purposes and... There were a handful back in the mid-'80s. Can't remember the names of them.
I just feel, I feel like we haven't taken advantage of as much as we could because of the 10-acre.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Right.
Quite frankly.
Yeah, and I think there's some other, other things in this article that are self-limiting in terms of being able to apply it.
I mean, the one that has been in front of us recently is, the one out behind me, is the Kennecy Land, Misty Meadows.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's a, considered a cluster?
That was considered a cluster in the back there, they were putting some cluster in there, I believe. Because they were doing the open spa, they were doing the open space trade-off stuff.
Right, yeah, they did come in under cluster.
Yeah.
It was a cluster, although it wasn't reduced lot sizes, but it was still...
It wasn't much, but they were getting some, a few different release.
They got some, I think they got some frontage relief by doing this.
So, what may be helpful for the board is, we could, we could map the existing residentially-zoned lots that are five acres or more, between five and 10 acres.
Yep.
That way, the board can see how many and where.
Yeah, see if it's gonna make any difference.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
All right.
Give us a little feed. And what's it gonna take to get this through to, this obviously gotta go for a town meeting vote.
It would, yep.
So, get that on...
Yeah.
We got plenty of time to play with it to get it on.
Absolutely.
I don't think this would be as controversial as some of the other ones.
Particularly if we show the map.
Right.
Let's, the board should look at the map first, make sure that where, where, where we're creating new eligibility, you guys are comfortable with that?
Yep. Kevin, what's the...
I think we should look at, at that whole, the entirety of 19593A in terms of, that's, that's what requires the 10 acres, but it also requires that the proposals be only within a subdivision. So, it would limit this article from being used for a redevelopment situation, and I'm not really sure we should do that at this point in time.
I think what it's saying is it has to be in a subdivision.
That's right.
But it'll be a new subdivision that you're, so you, somebody could...
Yeah.
Go in and buy up a neighborhood and tear all the houses down and make a new subdivision if they wanted to.
Well, they can't make a new subdivision if you've already got roads there, is the point. So, you know, there's bits in here, there's, there's bits in here that are tying it to effectively a new road construction, and everything has to be off that new road.
Right.
And with the, the current state of our build-out, where we're really looking at, at promoting redevelopment, I'm thinking we should...
Maybe loosen up some of the others.
Maybe loosen up some of those other ones, so that this article could be used as a redevelopment incentive as well as a development incentive.
That's a good thought.
I mean, we've definitely got places in town where that could...
Yeah.
Potentially be applied.
We'll work on it with the, with the map, if Evan can get that for the next meeting, and we'll go from there. That gets, this gets us started in the right direction on that one. So, keeping on the flow here, we'll, we'll jump in on the discussion of options to address pre-existing non-conforming neighborhoods, as we were talking about also at the past few meetings. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I got a general thought.
Okay.
Which is that, I guess, depending on how you're looking, look at it, some horrendously large number of lots in town are non-conforming due to a lot area.
Right.
And, I don't know, was it 80%, something like that?
It's a very large number.
Frankly, that...
Did you read the book? Did you read the book?
Which, the...
Blue Book?
Blue Book?
The Blue Book.
Hold up, email to us?
No, I haven't read through it yet. But it's, it's a pretty big number.
It's a very big number.
Yeah, it's, it's very informative how we came to that area.
What was that book?
Who sent it?
Colleen?
Colleen.
Yeah.
It's coming around now.
Thank you.
And my thought is that, as sort of a, a general statement, oh, yeah, this, yeah, I did see some of this. Yeah, I did. I didn't dig into detail, but it did go through the years.
Went through the years, when the changes happened and everything else.
And it, it strikes me that, as a general rule, within any, within any particular zoning area, we probably shouldn't be looking at more than about 25% non-conforming. Beyond that, it just kinda makes something of a joke of the, of the zoning definitions. There are two ways you can fix that. One is to change the lines for the various zones, and I think we're talking here primarily RA, RB, RC, RM.
Yep.
Or ABC, basically.
Right.
You can either move the lines, or you can reduce the requirements, or do some combination of both.
Right.
And I think that's probably the direction that we ought to go in, and we probably ought to have a, sort of a, if you will, a non-binding objective to get us down to the point where, where not more than about a quarter of the lots are non-conforming.
I think that's a reasonable goal.
Just as a goal, I mean, it's, it's not a...
And we may have to do that in, in stages, you know, neighborhoods at a time, but then the question becomes, do we, do we do, do we loosen up the, the sizing, the dimensional requirements for the entire zone? Or do we create a new zone? Or do we re, or do we change some of our RBs to RCs? And I think those are the, the three options, you know? One is change everything within RA to something else.
Yep.
Two would be create a, maybe RA1 and RA2 with different size, with different dimensional requirements. And three would be change some of our RA neighborhoods to RB, some of our RB neighborhoods to RCs.
Yep.
I don't know, does somebody have any other options on the, to put on the table?
Those are all good thoughts. I kind of agree with what you, the direction that we're trying to go here, it's...
So, I had a much...
Maybe it's a combination of the three, but you know...
You can go those routes. Those are very...
Controversial?
No, just very comprehensive and labor-intensive. Or you can go this route, which is why I handed this out.
I mean, if you look, yeah, I agree with you, I read through this and...
Yeah, so, the board needs to decide whether you are, whether the problem is twofold or onefold. Twofold is where you are trying to fix the zoning maps or reflect, reflects what's actually on the ground. And that incorporates both existing lots with houses on them, and potentially creating new developable lots with existing lots that are oversized. That's your business. What I understood this exercise to be was primarily to reduce the burden on existing single-family homeowners and two-family homeowners who are basically captured in the net of the zoning board special permit process related to expanding, modifying, extending a pre-existing non-conforming single-family as a structure. So, if that's the primary goal, or the board wants to kind of bifurcate this, this effort and attack that first, we can codify what's in this blue book directly into the zoning bylaw, and that would be very straightforward and very easy. It would not require any map amendments, it wouldn't require any amendments to the dimensional table, it would essentially create a grandfather clause based upon the date in which the zoning changes took place, and based upon, based upon when the lot was created or when the house was built. And that's essentially what the building inspector, about 12 years, was, was doing, even though the zoning bylaw didn't exactly say that.
Yeah.
And then, when I arrived and a, and a new building commissioner arrived, we changed the zoning bylaw to basically not allow that old practice to occur. If the desire of the community is now to kind of go back to the way we were doing business, which again is applying the, the, the date in which the zoning changed to those houses on the ground. So, in the Westlands, the average lot size is 7,500 to 10,000 square feet. The blue book would indicate what those dimensions, side setbacks, rear and front setbacks, would have been at that time, and in 2019 moving forward, we would apply them.
Yeah, well... So, Evan, I think what I'm hearing is that if you, if you were to go with a codification of the blue book grandfathering, any existing lot would be accepted under the dimensional requirements of the time that the original structure was built? Is that what you're basically saying?
I would recommend only applying it to existing structures date, date-built, not lots. I would not grandfather lots. I would grandfather structures.
Why is that?
I think that solves the, some of the problems.
Because that's, that's the primary problem. Currently, if you have an undersized lot...
Yep.
And you're not legally grandfathered, which most aren't in Chelmsford, you're required to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance, and there's a butter notification, public hearings. My understanding of the issue is, there's, there's existing houses with existing taxpayers who, who live in neighborhoods where all the lots are undersized, and they wanna put additions on and keep being with the neighborhood, and there, there be, there, the zoning that we apply is 2019 zoning, and obviously, they all have to go to the zoning board. And neighborhoods, property owners, zoning board members, attorneys, contractors, I think are all kind of mutually coming to the same conclusion that that is not a good way of doing business. That's not, we're not talking about creating new neighborhoods, we're talking about existing well-established neighborhoods and applying the dimensional standards, front yard setback, rear and front, to, based upon what those setbacks were when those neighborhoods were built.
So basically, it's, it's a financial and time burden for anybody to improve their property in these neighborhoods. And if you've got a neighborhood squabble going on, it can literally get in, it can literally prevent them from improving their properties.
I'm, so I'm not, again, I'm not suggesting you touch lots. Lots, lots, I, I wouldn't suggest going through grandfathering. In fact, I'd have to work with council to see if that's even legally possible. But I'm not sure what the public incentive would be to create, um, to make legal, make building lots that aren't currently legal building lots and overnight make them buildable.
So Evan, I, I disagree with you.
Yeah.
Um, and I disagree because if you've got a lot in the Westlands that's three-quarters of an acre, today you can't build on that. But the average size in the neighborhood is under a quarter of an acre. So it doesn't make sense to me to prohibit the owner of that property from not being able to construct something new on a lot that is substantially bigger than the, the average size of the neighborhood. I, I think it makes more sense to rezone that neighborhood to be compatible with what's really there.
So under your scenario, is there a house on that three?
No.
Okay. So again, we could map, we could map all of the vacant lots in town that are oversized or that are, that are vacant. My guess is many of them, if not all of them, have a house on them.
It, it could be, but my point is, I think that, I think we should take this in both directions is take the blue book into consideration
Right.
in terms of what was, what were those neighborhoods constructed under? But also look at those maps and identify where the pockets are, where the neighborhood pockets are that are sized at a quarter of an acre or whatever, and zone them at that. Because that's what they were structured as.
All I'm suggesting is that you do a two-step process.
I, I understand. I agree exactly with what Evan is saying.
Yeah.
Take this as, even if you, you know, if you eventually get to it, whatever down the road, if we do a thing in front of town meeting, this is one section.
Yeah.
You got the other section.
Oh, Lord, no, don't put them together as a single.
Don't put them together because.
No. I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I think you got to still it as two separate items.
Yeah, you do.
Bring it forward as two separate items.
Or three or four or five.
I think, I think this is a really good thing that we get by really easy.
Yeah.
And then you, you work the other one in.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I would go in this, in a different order. I think both, both avenues are interesting, but I think we can very much simplify the problem by starting with the matter of basic overall zoning. See where that gets us. And then decide if we need to jump in to doing something based on this blue book. I personally am made a little bit uneasy by, uh, schemes like heavy use of this blue book that would basically create very, very different, uh, outcomes for people where the only difference is when that house happened to get built. You know, I don't think that should be a really important, uh, determiner of what they're allowed to do. So I'd say, I'd say do the, the zoning level view first, the, the, changing the zones around, possibly changing overall dimension requirements. See what we get for a result. See if we bring the non-conformance down from eighty percent to sixty percent or forty percent or whatever it might be. And then see if we need to dig in, uh, I mean, at, at that point, people can still go to the ZBA and, uh, and will have cut the load by half.
So Mike, if you, if you go down the zoning
Yeah.
that you're suggesting, what Nancy's suggesting too, could someone build a new house on the smaller lot?
It depends on what our, the result of our.
No, but if you rezone a section of a lot.
Right.
And if it's, what would you, what would you call it, twenty-five thousand or twenty thousand square feet?
Okay, so if, if the, the area was laid out
What's the smallest area?
At twenty thousand square feet.
Twenty thousand square feet, and right now you have a lot that you said three-quarters was, uh,
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand square feet.
Thirty thousand.
They could put a house on a, on the, on a portion of the twenty thousand square feet and that's it, to fit into that neighborhood. Whereas right now they couldn't because it's an acre lot and need required.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. So what I'm, basically what I'm saying is if, if we address it with rezoning or redimensioning, the objective is to keep the neighborhood compatible. Whereas if we go with the blue book, you're really doing a lot-by-lot discrimination.
Right.
Based on the build date.
When those lots, when that's, all the subdivisions went through, they, they built them to the size that they built them.
Yeah.
And, and zoning bypassed what they were built at, so now it's.
But there's a reason why they made it, the, the, did lots bigger because they didn't want as many houses.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is that the lots that were there, the zoning is now acre zoning, and back when it was built, it was only seventy-five hundred square foot zoning.
Remember, a lot of this had to do with sewage.
So the zoning itself bypassed what's on the ground.
Yeah.
So in order to bring it back, you gotta, you gotta backtrack to what that original design was and go with that.
Opening it up for them to stop building houses, more houses on these smaller lots again?
Well, they're unlikely to build a lot more houses.
Most of the, most of the, them neighborhoods are all built out.
Houses on every, every bit of it. You may have.
Already do now if you look at the Westlands.
Three or four. That have an extra lot, but the, the majority of them is gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're opening the door for whatever green, open space there is now. If you change the lot size to, and then you're gonna see a home.
If you look on the map.
Take a look.
With Stedman Street, Westlands is on the right, and I guess some of the Westlands is on the left. The west, the traditional Westlands area is over here. If you look at Dalton, those are small lots, but if you look at Stedman, there, there are lots that are twice as big.
That's right.
So if you do Nan's methodology, you're looking at lots rather than structures.
Right.
That's right.
And, and if you look at lots and you're trying to make the zoning map, um, consistent with what's on the ground, you will, you will create
A couple.
opportunity for, for existing lots to be subdivided and new lots created.
But not a lot of them.
Well, we, I mean, it could be hundreds around town.
Well, we need to find that out. We need to answer that question rather than.
It's where you draw the lines.
Can we get that accomplished with your mapping?
We can do that. It'll take a little bit more time.
Right.
But out of the gate, I mean, we're talking hundreds of lots.
Haven't had a chance to go chase the map.
So Evan, in your, in your scenario, where it's just a structure, they would have building, was built in nineteen sixty-three, they would have to follow the setbacks of nineteen sixty-three. They couldn't encroach on the setbacks.
Correct. Without, without a variance.
Would that cover, would that cover all setbacks, including your wetland setbacks?
No, 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 just zoning setbacks.
Just zoning setbacks. Now, another question here. Once you take the house that was built in nineteen sixty-three, you apply the nineteen sixty-three setbacks, and you put an addition on it in twenty nineteen, now is that house nineteen sixty-three or twenty nineteen? Does it, does this mean you get one and only one addition, and after that, the effective date of your house?
Sure. So the, the.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's a lot of interesting questions here.
No, I mean, the assessor's database has a year built. Um, in some cases, that year built is incorrect, primarily with historic structures because when the, when the building code came in and when assessors began using databases, they would oftentimes change the date based upon, uh, the first major building.
That's not what I'm saying. Let's say you have a house built in sixty-three and you put an addition on in twenty nineteen. Some of that was built in sixty-three, some of it was built in twenty nineteen. You only get one date. Which one is it? And why?
Nineteen, the older.
Going forward.
The older date or the young? Okay, then you always take the older date, which means people could, you know, just add on and add on and on.
So what, so.
Add and add and add.
Right, so at the end of the day, what, what will happen over time is, if you recall, when we updated, probably six years ago, we updated the, um, pre-existing non-conforming. We added a, kind of a mansionization clause.
Right.
It's that, it's that clause specifically that is capturing, it increased the net.
Yeah.
And it's made the zoning board significantly busier over the years.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do in and of itself with insufficient lot area. Insufficient lot area in and of itself is, is exempt and not considered a reason for prohibiting additions on houses.
Oh, I agree.
So we have this mansionization provision, which is a sliding scale. That's the, that's the provision within several others.
That you think will protect.
That the, well, that the, the blue book would help, um, alleviate. However, under your scenario, let's assume we do away with the mansionization clause, and you go to the, you go to the Westlands, and some of those houses haven't, haven't built out to twelve, twelve feet off the property line. And in two thousand nineteen, we institute the blue book and allow them to build out. Incrementally, every house is going to expand out to the twelve-foot setback. And eventually, you'll have many, many large homes in the Westlands on small lots.
Right.
So it's, it's a balancing act as to how big do you want a house to be on a small lot?
Right.
Currently in the Westlands, those are beautiful neighborhoods, and most people haven't, they haven't mansion, mansionized their, their structure.
That seems to be the trend, though, that what they want is, is the big house, the small lot.
That's what's selling.
Right, right.
What's selling right now.
I don't, I don't see that in the Westlands happening much because.
Exactly, and it hasn't happened. I don't think it will.
The only way you can add more square footage is really going straight out. Cause, you know, my son lives there, twelve feet off on one side. Probably fourteen, fifteen feet off the other side. You probably have fifteen, twenty feet in the back. You don't have a lot of, you're not gonna make a McMansion on it because you just don't have
Yeah.
That's why I think Evan's idea would work.
You could make a townhouse.
Character of the neighborhood.
Well, that's.
By then he was building up. Whatever you could get away with back then, you could get it now, that's it.
The blue book is, it's a, it's an easy first step. It doesn't, it doesn't solve
Yeah.
the second issue, which is a real issue.
My feeling is it ought to be the second step, that the first step ought to be to, uh, review and possibly generalize the zoning.
Well, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll proceed with the dual track. I'll get you the map.
Yeah, let's do the dual.
Okay. That way you'll be able to see, you're not making any decisions tonight. We still have time.
It's, we got, we got plenty of time, I think. It's.
It's an interesting problem.
Yeah, it is. All right, why don't we work with that? We'll get out of this, uh, out of this discussion. Another thing in new business that, that was brought up to me earlier on the Route Forty Study Committee. You wanna chime in on what, what your, what your thoughts are on?
So I haven't talked to Dawn or Nancy about it, but I was just trying to, um, make a suggestion that the, um, the Board of Selectmen have to, if we're gonna continue the, the committee, uh, have to vote on that on the third of June. So the suggestion was, we're meeting next week. We'll probably have another meeting after that, and then we're gonna present to the planning board. But there's some discussion that, with the new developer that, now that changed and they've got a new plan, that maybe we should keep the.
Well, I don't think they have a plan.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they have a plan.
So, but I, I'm understanding that they may want to come in front of this board in the summer again, in front of this board, but they also mentioned coming in front of the committee, but the committee will be disbanded after the thirtieth. So the question was, is should we keep the, uh, assign the committee still, get it voted in by this committee here, at least until it gets to town meeting in the fall? And once a decision comes in, then the, the, cause, uh, when we signed up, it was December, it was in September, and it was supposed to be for one year, but it only turned to be for nine months because everything is in June, gets reset.
I don't see there's any harm in it.
If, uh, the question came up, we talked, the PM mentioned it, do you want to continue it to, to September? At least until we get this in front of town meeting and then decide, because if it's used as a reference, if there's something that comes up, say, hey, did you guys think of that, you can go back to the committee. I don't think we'll be meeting during the summer unless something comes up. But once we make this presentation, it's over until this, this board feels that we need to reconvene.
How do we go forward with that? Do we make a, make a motion and vote on it to extend it or?
Yeah, you can do that tonight or you can do it.
Before we make a motion, it seemed to me that the subcommittee was pretty definite on what they want on the north and south side.
Yeah, they still are.
So therefore, go ahead, move forward, make, make the presentation to the planning board, and then the new applicant will come forward once they have something in mind. I, I, they don't have anything in mind yet. Why keep the committee ongoing?
You know, I'd rather keep, I'd rather keep the committee together, even if they're not, even if there's no need for them, if we expect that we could get the applicant coming in with other ideas. Because frankly, that committee has put a lot of effort into it. They've come together as a team and developed as a team, and I would hate to have to converge a new committee of new membership to deal with something else that comes on the table.
Let them carry, let them carry the ball to the end.
You know, if, if nothing comes up, they're not doing anything.
If nothing comes up?
Cause there's other committees right in town that are still live, but they don't meet, right? There's a few committees that are still there.
Just a couple, just a couple of thoughts on those. If it's simply discussing what the subcommittee's going to present to the planning board, likely in June, I would imagine.
Yes.
And, and it's simply a discussion as to what is the role of, of the subcommittee as it pertains to between now and fall town meeting on their proposal as it stands right now? That's a question for the planning board, and the question is, to what degree is the planning board gonna take full ownership of that, of that, of that article? If the planning board is going to rely heavily on the subcommittee members to present and answer questions at town meeting in the fall, then you're best served keeping that subcommittee active for that sole purpose. If the planning board's gonna take full ownership of it, then it may not, it may not, it may not have as large of a need to keep that subcommittee officially in place.
Okay.
They can still, as, as former committee members, they can still present and answer questions. As it pertains to, um, you know, a new entity or a new proposal coming back to the table, my suggestion at this point is the planning board should wait and see what, what that may, may all be about. To presume, to presume that an existing subcommittee should or is the best form of venue for whatever, I mean, I have no idea.
Right.
Right? My suggestion is let's not get ahead of ourselves because we don't know, we don't know what's, what may happen.
We got a couple of weeks here now anyway, so I really don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think at this point, the planning board has appointed a subcommittee. The sub, subcommittee is in your eleventh hour. You're gonna present to the planning board. To, to introduce new, new wrinkles or what-if scenarios that don't currently exist, to me just seems that we're getting ahead of ourselves. If, if, if an entity shows up in front of the subcommittee or the planning board, at that point, the planning board will have to make a decision as to how to proceed.
I think we should keep them intact, and if they have any questions, we can deal with them.
Why don't we, because the, the Board of Selectmen vote on this, I believe, on the third of June.
That's confusing to me because the, the Route Forty Committee is a subcommittee of the planning board.
Planning board committee, it's not select.
I'm not, I'm confused.
We got a letter from the town saying our committee is, is ending in, on the thirtieth of June.
So it may have been a one-year appointment.
It was a one-year appointment, but it was only, it only started in September.
But it was an appointment of the select board, so I don't think the select board needs to take any action on a reappointment or extension of the subcommittee.
Okay.
I, I think it's a, an action of this board.
Why don't we throw a motion on it? We'll see how the board.
Well, let me, let me make this suggestion. If there's in fact gonna be a presentation, and this is the, the, the drop dead date is the end of June. If there's gonna be a presentation to the board at the beginning of June, maybe we wait until we see what the presentation gives us and decide.
That's what I'm saying. My understanding is that the subcommittee's gonna present to the planning board sometime in June.
And at that point, we can make a decision about extending the committee, which I think may be a very good idea.
The only reason we brought it up is to suggest, because we were under the impression that, from the letter that we received, is that if you were going to be re, uh, reassigned on the committee, it had to go to the planning, uh, Board of Selectmen on the third.
Let me check with, um, town clerk tomorrow.
Don't have another meeting.
My understanding is that this is a planning board subcommittee.
Yes, it was.
It was appointed by the planning board, and in lieu of a, in lieu of more than a one-year term, the default is a one-year term. So that's why the town clerk likely sent, sent those, those letters out. But I don't believe it's.
So if, if it was a one-year term, then you're good at least until September, we're fine.
Right, it would take you to September.
Through the end of June.
Right, it would take you to September.
Why don't you chase, chase that down and find out what the situation is?
Virginia.
Come on up, Virginia. We have a real select person.
She represents us too, I think.
Yeah, she is. She's our.
I am Virginia Timmons, 28, Lovett Lane. I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I'm also on the committee, so I received the same notice that Mike did. It did come up in that notice that they're putting together the appointments for all the town committees for approval for the Board of Selectmen on June 3rd. And Trish Dersis was CC'd on some of those communications because Christina did talk to Trish about it and then talked to Colleen. So I think there is some confusion about where the appointments go. They were one, one-year appointments, but according to what I was told, they had them all just end on June 30th because that's typically where they end the one year. So it was a one-year appointment that started in September and ended on June 30th, so I don't think you can assume that we're good until September.
Okay, all right, I see. You went on the fiscal year.
Right, and our, and the letters that we received, I think with the exception of one, all said until June 30th. So you can't assume that we're good to the, to September.
That's what I'm suggesting.
If you still want to have access to that committee.
I'm suggesting that, let me get clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My guess is that it's a planning board appointment and that the planning board can extend or reappoint.
Okay.
You can do that sometime in June.
Okay.
I'm not aware that the select board had anything to do with the current subcommittee.
No, they didn't as far as I know.
Right.
Well, can we vote to keep it intact until we get an answer, so?
Well, they're good to the end of June.
You don't have to.
Yeah, they're good to the end of June, and you're going to meet.
We'll meet before they.
Once, once I'm meeting in June, because I'm actually going to be gone for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in June, you're scheduled to meet the 12th and the 26th. And I'm assuming that the subcommittees would prefer to be in front of you on the 12th.
We're reviewing the document on Tuesday, next Tuesday, and then we'll probably have another quick meeting right after that with some final comments and then be able to put that presentation together.
So either 12th or the 26th of June.
It's in that range.
I will not be around on the 12th. Anybody else, the 12th? What about the 26th? Anybody else?